Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the board's assembly. And good evening, gentlemen.
Mr. Muskowski?
Here.
Mr. Greenwood?
Here.
Mr. Hanson? Mr. Earhart?
Here.
Mr. Hodges?
Here.
And folks, just so you know, Mr. Hanson did advise we would not make it tonight nor telephonically adjourn us. And has everyone reviewed? And there's no changes. Do we intend to go ahead and motion to adopt?
Mr. Chairman, will you adopt the amended agenda we had before us?
Second.
Mr. Greenwood?
The chairman just got it. So it's amended now that.
I think the role was how I know role was added from.
They sent an email actually.
Mr. Hanson? Mr. Earhart?
Aye.
Mr. Muskowski?
Aye.
Aye.
The first item we have up is a Motorola upgrade proposal for fire certificate project mobile solutions.
Gentlemen, I have requested Motorola representatives come to the meeting tonight to be able to answer questions. As y'all are aware, we have had two full-blown presentations in 2017 and again in 2018 on the challenges that we're facing with the coverage in any areas of the county. What you have in front of you is a memo that I pulled together reflecting the three options that have been discussed in the past, what these three options do present, and the expansion of services, and then a example or projected discussion of the cost of the projects, which of course, the four full sites could be most expensive. I did include in the projected costs some down payment from our general fund unassigned balance. That is under discussion. But the main thing that I asked Mr. Farn to meet here tonight for was to answer any questions and see if y'all will support us to move forward with this proposal.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Lord, for having me come today this evening and to just give a recap or summary of some of the key issues associated with the county's public safety radio system upgrade. As Mr. Tassanaria indicated, we were brought in previously with a more full proposal, but some of the highlights were the fact that in historical perspective, this probably really started back in 2011, when the county issued an RFP, a bit of RFP. At that time, you'll give the responses and the packages that came back, the county opted not to move forward with that procurement. That was in 2011. In 2012, the decision was made to take an interim step forward by leveraging the radio system that Hanover County has, and some of their coverage basically spills significantly over into King William County. So a strategy was put together that leveraged the Hanover County system, the county purchased consoles for their dispatch center operation, and some handhold radios and mobile radios, and basically used the coverage that was spilling over from Hanover County obviously for the coordination of Hanover. So that was kind of its first step, just to get some coverage improvements at very low cost, full well knowing that that was not going to be the end-all solution, that there would have to be other investments made over time. We kind of referred to that as kind of the phase one step. About a year later, in 2012, one power site was paid for and built in West Point, and that option belongs exclusively to the county, and so that was phase two. So we basically had a one-site system with mostly recovered, pretty much a spill-over coverage from Hanover. Again, still knowing that that was not the end-all solution, it was kind of another interim step forward. Of course, a number of years since that time, we've had many working sessions with the county and different administrations, looking at how can we get to the ultimate level of public safety coverage that the law enforcement, fire, EMS operatives really need to do their job safely, going back to probably two and a half, three years, I think, when we kind of re-engage actively in looking at some specific solutions, one of which we have in front of you today, a four-site solution that provides improved coverage primarily in the area around 360, the ALIT area where your growth is today, and looking at some future plans for the growth down the road for the next five years or so. We plan for building the system to accommodate where your county is growing. So today's proposal, as I said before, provides the coverage improvements that's radically and critically needed by your first responders. The focus is on providing in-building coverage, which is so important as for fire and EMS workers who obviously have to respond in apartment complexes, commercial buildings, and whatnot, and being able to communicate is highly important, stay in contact with dispatch for officer safety and citizen safety, quite frankly. The proposal that we have in front of you today leverages all of the existing investments that were made in 2012 and 2013, so we're not throwing anything away, we're adding on to it and take it to the level of build-out that's really needed by your first responders. The package is a four-site solution, and we have a number of innovative and creative payment plans that I made, that may be one of the solutions that I know we offer is a two-year deferred lease scenario. So if the contract was initiated, you know, say November of this year, the first payment would have to be due until 2021, two years from now. So a lot of flexibility, and we have a lot of variations to kind of work with you to get the final start, and then work out the best payment structure. So with that said, I'll pause at this point and ask if there are any questions or additional information that I could.
Is all time to do one and accrual?
Well, it gets you clearly there from a coverage safety perspective in the ALIT area. You made a lot of trade-offs because, you know, a lot of users want coverage everywhere all the time, but no one can afford that, no county, right? And so we said, let's focus on the ALIT area, because that's where the growth is, and you've got residential coverage in most parts of the county. There will be some fringe areas that, you know, probably is not economically advantageous to put another tower there just to get maybe a smaller area of coverage, but those are things that we have to think about. One of the solutions that's also not proposed is an option, something called BDA, biorex amplifiers. Those are like coverage enhancements for a specific building, so rather than putting up a tower, if you've got an area where building, county building, or whatever, you really want to get coverage in, and it doesn't make financial sense to build up a tower because it's a very limited area, so there's an option to add a BDA at a couple of sites. So it's kind of, well, we're not including those now, you don't really know what those are until you build a system out and see what you might.
So the high school doesn't have an option to have a BDA?
Yeah, one because the tower that we're proposing is at the high school itself, so we're expecting that to have just great coverage from the main tower that's right out back to the high school, so.
Is a tower necessary at the high school in lieu of the BDA?
Yeah, the tower is much preferred. One, because the tower covers the high school and a whole lot of areas around Central Garage and that whole 360 area, so that's, that tower along with another tower that's slightly north of there provide the bulk of the coverage where we're really trying to get in-building coverage. So where you have the towers, you don't need the BDA, but if you've got a remote area where it doesn't make sense to put an additional tower, you say, well, kind of you can get away by just putting a BDA in that building and using that to be a cost-effective solution for unlimited area.
Mr. Chairman, absent any comments from that side, I would like to.
Yeah.
I don't want to comment, just already except.
Wait, you finished?
Well, I.
No, right negative.
I'm just trying to share a fun platform.
All right, thank you. Like I said, this is the first time I saw it, since it's an amended agenda. I guess the previous board that Travis and I were on, like I said, we were pushing for some of this, and like I said, at that time, we couldn't afford these extra towers, and like I said, we made options, well, Mr. Edder was not on board then either, but I thought we had made stipulations of all the new towers that we had were to allow the county to be able to use. Why can't we use one of those spots on the King William Tower that's there now instead of building a new tower at King William High School? Or use the water tower? We were told that the water tower are going to have something to put on top of it too.
Yeah.
Why can that not be done?
Great question. All these towers that we're talking about are existing towers. We're not building new towers.
Oh, thank you.
Maybe I'm just. We're putting ready equipment at an existing site exactly.
Pardon me, I didn't get that part even.
Okay.
The water tower is in a second because.
Wait a minute.
What were you saying? Motorola told me at West Point years ago that it absorbs this signal and really is why we were having so much trouble entering that as a living.
Yeah, the water tank, we looked at that, in fact, that was part of our design, but when we took the next step of trying to figure out what would be the cost of preparing that with the tower, the tank, and the property, it became very cost prohibitive to invest that amount of money because there's underground piping. In fact, we spoke with the, I can't remember the gentleman's name, someone from the county's public works department.
Right.
And he expressed a number of concerns about us using that location, and then given the fact that the King William High School tower that's already there provided, in fact, in some cases, better coverage, we decided to go back to the high school site.
Well, my one comment was going to be to clarify, if I understand this correctly, they were going to be using the existing.
Yeah.
Tower sites there. You know, I don't have a coverage map to see where we're missing, and I know we're missing in some key areas like around Firehouse, kind of northeast quadrant there, ALIT. What about areas a little bit north of this where we're not really building any infrastructure out, like in Mr. Earhart's district, you know, north along that area 30 there? What type of coverage are we going to end up with there? Is that going to be the primary hole in this?
Yeah, we have some maps, and I think we can share those. We've got a number of maps, we've got over a hundred scenarios.
I know that Buellville and, you know, that upper part of the county, there's a lot of areas up in there. I was going to ask if Sheriff and Laura might be able to.
Watch your coverage.
Build the coverage area.
Okay.
In-building coverage and residential type building.
There's lots of areas that may get. Okay, and this would be a build-out? Alternative one?
Yes. Actually, this is an earlier alternative side in terms of the coverage, but we're looking for.
So are these maps available anywhere, or is it only a part of opposite, I mean?
Those were part of the binders that the board received at the presentation.
Okay.
If you'll go back to the.
So, Jeff, you're probably the best person to answer, as remain Laura. Do we not have, is there not an option for the upper northwest part of the county? We not can't build on something from Newtown or Sparta or something like that? We can't piggyback on something to serve that area of the county?
So we're getting spill over, if you will, from the Hanover Courthouse tower and that part of the county. The furthest, the tower that's furthest north that they're proposing is the AT&T Tower at Upshaw, which would help that part of the county a lot more than what it is now. But you're right, that Buellville.
Frog level, there's nothing available, frog level that we could facilitate or broker something?
Caroline has built that system also. I don't know where their towers are located, maybe something that the Motorola folks know, but I can't answer that.
Yeah, I don't directly have it off my head. We can come back and show that with.
But I guess the point is that that tower at Upshaw Road is most beneficial because of the area that we're having our problems at, that tower will help cover that area between the high school and the Upshaw Road Tower. And that's going for the goal. I thought we had a.
What is SBA? What's the acronym that stands for under number four? What is SBA?
That's the Tower Management Company.
Where is that located?
It's not far from the, probably the landfill.
At West Rocks.
Yeah.
Near West Rocks.
Over by.
The H8, you know, that, it's right by there.
Yeah, set back from the road, anybody have to bother, so if you can't probably sit in the road, it's not too far from there still.
The four-site system is the same thing as this three plus Hanover, correct?
No, SBA would be the four-site.
The existing site is the state troop location, the cell tower we currently have. Then we're adding three more, but we have to retrofit the cell tower at the state troopers' location as well as part of this, so that's why it's a four-site.
So is this map accurate on the four-site position, or?
No, not completely. To answer the question about the coverage in the north, it is accurate, I guess. It doesn't represent the northern.
It probably fills in some of those gaps down there.
That's a very good one, yeah. So the four-site would go here and have to fill that in, so this was a early version. So even with four sites, just you're going to have this level.
So this green reflects distribution with the upgrade?
Yes. And the green reflects 95% reliable coverage. The white doesn't necessarily mean that you don't have coverage, but it just means it's not 95% reliable, so.
So do we have a scenario involving a BDA at the high school in lieu of an upgrade at the high school?
No, the, at this point, because we're going with the four-site design, the BDA's are really optional enhancement. If you need them after you've built the system and built the test, done the testing, if there is a building that needs an additional coverage improvement in a basement, or garage, or park corner, the BDA is the solution that we are recommending to have as a.
The BDA doesn't fill in the coverage on 360, do you mean?
Right, but these also show the water tank as a selected location and not the high school. Only show King William Water Tank.
I'm sorry. Much earlier generations then, yeah.
So the coverage area may or may not be the same. Just an observation.
Yes.
The water tank is shown as the site for things.
Yeah, but for the north, AT&T site, that's providing the coverage up in the north area to the county.
Well, they even stated earlier in the presentation that the tower site at the high school provides better coverage.
That's right.
Than the water.
Sure, but they're good and disputable, there's still spots. As far as I know, and I've talked with Chief Fosoya West Point, Police Chief, they're not happening anywhere. The other problem we're having is that up here in the county. And I have not discussed that with Chief Parkes, so I, if you speak it out of turn, if I say that, I don't know, probably what goes in the bill and what they were experiencing now, I don't know.
Chief Parkes has not told us that there's any issues with the radio communications down there, so I'm guessing it's along the same lines from Chief to Fosoya you're saying. Our big issues are on that upper edge where we're talking about, from the Firehouse, Thor Park, all of that area.
So that's the more recent? Yeah.
And so what's portable one versus portable two?
Portable one, officer operates on the street, right, making a stop, open a road. The next one shows about 7 dB coverage, which is basically in a residential building, a home, or, you know, a small kind of commercial building. And then the dB goes up and represents bigger buildings, more heftier buildings, more concrete, more steel, so you can try to predict, you know, what types of building this coverage design will be able to provide 95% reliable coverage inside of, and you increase your dB loss from 7 dB to 14 dB, et cetera.
And then the tower on the beginning, sorry, go ahead and.
Well, again, I just want to make sure that, you know, at that level of investment that we're solving, at least the majority of the problems, understanding that, you know, that's all of them, through all kinds of challenges, topography, trees, all those things.
And we selected the, one of the other two alternatives, not the four we just put in, now.
Yeah, yeah, again, you still have coverage issues. The SBA area is kind of right down here, down 30, you've got, you're not, you're going to have still have issue there. Ask me.
The sheriff and Motorola and Chief Nodley and I and the Director of Finance have met on just at least a couple of times in the last few months, and I would say that the consensus is that the option to provide the four towers is not appropriate, because as you stated, if we take one of the lessons, then we will be turning around and having to do something for the next two, three years. And we have put this expenditure on quite a while, but it is to the point now where we are aware that there are issues, and we feel very fortunate that there is not any type of injuries or deaths related to the lack of coverage and being able to communicate. So I would recommend, Lord, that you consider allowing us to bring back a more polished version of this with a resolution authorizing we to move forward with the contract at the 28th meeting. Now, granted, the financing will not be finalized at that time, the numbers that you have on your county leasing option page, those interest rates have gone down, payment rates would have gone down, I can run some different scenarios for using some of the unassigned general fund, if the board's not comfortable, you know, with the $2 million, then I could run some other numbers and send out to you so that you could see the impact and what the difference of balance of the general fund. There have been, the unassigned is exactly what we need to use this for.
I would like to use as much of the unassigned fund balance as possible. I mean, rather than incurring additional long-term debt.
We need to strike a balance, because this is going to be the only thing that we've got to deal with. So I'm certainly for using it in a smart manner, using the most of the excess.
And the first payment deferred interest is not accumulating all that money?
It is, it's all kind of based into the annual payments.
So we're still.
Yes.
We're not paying enough, it's not paying interest during the rate payment, that's what I'd be.
There are just no set payments, but talking to the Director of Finance, we discussed how we would try to utilize the first two years where we don't have standard payments to where we have a balance, we can be trying to pay towards that, so when we get to the state of payments that we have in, then they'll be reduced.
And even though the bank or the way we're going to bank, where you won't have a bond, but you'll have something more brushed than that.
Well, I'll go ahead and make a motion that you proceed to bring us a resolution act on in the next meeting. Well, we decided that your motion.
It's easier to just go on. Somebody will say, I never did.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion in a second.
Mr. Hanson? Mr. Earhart?
Aye.
Mr. Muskowski?
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood?
Aye.
Chair Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, while I'm not jerking to the resolution, I did want to pose a question for Travis. What do you have, you seem to have an inside track, what other items might you know of that the rest of us don't know of, which is maybe more pressing than public safety and life expenses?
No, nothing specifically. There's always unexpected expenses in an organization of this size with as many things as we cover, just as there are unexpected expenses in our own daily lives. And, you know, just like, you know, you wouldn't deplete your own savings account to cover one expense, you know, entirely, if you had the option to finance something, you wouldn't want to do that here either.
Because my understanding of unassigned fund balance should be 3% to 5% of what your revenue, not your actual operating expenses.
No, and that's, it is 15%, and that's to cover, you know, catastrophic loss of cash. But again, you know, I know some of the discussion out there has been, you know, the amount of debt that the county has versus what was in, you know, this account that is, you know, a savings account, but just like, you know, all of this is collateralized long-term debt, and so just like you wouldn't deplete your savings until your mortgage was paid off, and, you know, you wouldn't, you wouldn't want to do that in this case either. So again, I'm for the most that makes sense, but, you know, taking it down to the level where we have just enough, you know, to not have to borrow, you know, on RANs.
Right.
Now, I'm not, I'm not for that at all.
Right, 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 what you do.
So we've got to be, we've got to be smart about it, and no, that's no special insight other than eight years of experience of unexpected expenses in local government.
Right, right. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right, next item is the Sweet Sue Solar Facility on Bayline, Eders, Director of Community Development.
Good evening, everyone. Y'all should each have, you have the Inverge application in front of you, also included some maps, which are the general locations, and some idea of the magnitude of the proposed development. This can give you a good idea, the Inverge is the developer for the Sweet Sue Solar facility. They have applied for a condition use permit at a pre-19. It's going to be a 77-megawatt solar generating facility. This is the Chanel property between, look around, Manfield and Infield, that intersection through there. The project area maximum is going to be 1,362 acres of land. The fenced-in area, which is your solar panel footprint, is going to be approximately 576 acres. All the adjacent properties are zoned agricultural conservation, there's some residential in the area, Arloine and is residential.
Is there a subdivision, a small subdivision?
Monqueon Farms is right there where the Flippo property comes down, because it's Chanel and Flippo. So Chanel has the most of the acreage, it's Chanel, and then Flippo has two parcels, and they are, you know where that ravine is on this property, Monqueon Farms is up on top of that ridge. So look at the second page of that, the lighting of the city, go to that. Second page, did I hand it up? And you can see, that's Monqueon Farms right there. This gives you a good idea as relation to the.
And you're in New Orleans, how is it drawn to this property?
We've got Manfield on, Infield is the main one. Okay. What you're thinking of.
And how close can it be to Infield? And then for a setback on that?
No, there's, they're well set back from the nearest, 300 feet is closest they're going to be to Infield, I believe, on their perpetual. And then that doesn't take into account the RPAs and all the other factors that push it back. But broadly, I would think in terms of at least 300 feet. Well, there's, you know, of course, the applicant is going to give the most positive, I think, one of the measurements, the nearest house or structure is 800, was the nearest.
That's existing house?
Yes, all this is based on existing.
So we have any, they have building permits or anything that has an issue with ones that might be closer than that?
No, at this time. It's just the way the, if you look at how that parcel's laid out, one of the reasons Inverge has invested the effort into trying to get a condition use permit is because it was so agricultural, there was very limited housing in the area, and they felt it would basically be an easier place to develop.
Is there any revenue estimate that they can?
Yeah, they come up with an estimate and. Yeah, they come up with an estimate, and I've been working on potential estimates as well. As you probably know, this is a seventy-seven megawatt, which means we can charge machinery and tools tax on it, unlike the smaller facilities. We could charge up to twenty percent tax of what we typically charge. Over the life of the project, well, I'll start at the beginning. It comes out of land use, and then we roll back five years. So whatever it's assessed at now, we'll get that for this year, and then five years of back taxes, so we'll get that chunk of money coming off of it. Going forward, we'll do the machinery and tools tax, twenty percent of that. I don't, at this point, have enough information to tell you what that's going to be, because I don't know the cost. The applicant has floated around numbers of about, over the life, over the thirty-five-year life of the project, looking at about two and a half, three million dollars to the county for that. So, but I have no way of giving you all those numbers at this point.
I'm no expert on solar production, Derry. Do you know of it, or have knowledge of any negative effects of solar on the environment?
No, that's a shortage. You know...
I mean, I've heard runoff and different things.
And those are issues, don't get me wrong at all. One of the things that, you know, I worry about, you know my background, and I'm also the E N S administrator for the county. You know, I take lessons learned from other counties and other solar farms that I work on, and looking at stuff like this. All of those issues are addressed in our site plan review. You cannot build the solar farm, even if the Board approves the conditional use permit. It is for the land use, not for construction. They can't build anything until they have plans that are approved by the county. And those plans address wetlands, streams, erosion segment control during construction, post-construction stormwater management, drainage. And every single one of those issues has to be satisfied to our satisfaction before they can get a land disturbance permit and push anything.
So what's your estimate on even going forward with this? All right, what's your estimate on even going forward with this, if we approve it tonight?
Well, y'all aren't, I mean, I'm going to bring this to all the community.
No, I understand that, I mean, should you, or would we be able to, how long would it be before they approve?
Uh, their timeline is in, actually in the, in there, but I think twenty-twenty-one.
Yes, I believe towards the fourth quarter of twenty-twenty-one.
So the timeline that they have for approval, because again, the whole process, you know, they, they've started a long time ago. We had a preliminary meeting sitting right in here to get it started. It, we had two committee meetings, and so we, and then we had the planning commission meeting, and the public hearing for it, and the planning commission voted four to one to take it to the Board for approval. And obviously, I recommended to the planning commission that they approve this use permit here. So they would probably be a year out before they even started, because of the permitting process, to be honest. Once they get through, if they get through this approval, they've got six months to a year before they could get all the permits from us to construct the project.
Is, how many people spoke in favor or against it, the planning commission at the public hearing for that?
I'm going to edge a little bit, because no one actually spoke against having a solar farm. They spoke predominantly about concerns of its impact, but no one came out and said, "Oh, we shouldn't build a solar farm." No, and on the other side of that, no one came out and said, "Oh, we should build a solar farm." So most of the public comments were concerns with drainage, with wetlands impacts, with its overall effects to the environment. And a big part of it was looking for additional studies, and concerned about what the impact of construction of the facility would be. And those, all of those concerns have to be addressed as part of the site plan review process, anyway. Invengey did respond, we had a number of written comments, and plus from the committee meetings that we held. Invengey has responded, you will be getting at your, at the twenty-eighth, you'll be getting those comments that came from the public, Invengey's response to them. And that's what I kind of present to, to the Board on the twenty-eighth. And the concerns were very justified, I mean, you know, there's always concerns whenever you're doing a large construction project like this. Most, and then there was concerns about what it will do for the county, as far as kind of the revenue generating, if it would cause any long-term effects. You know, based on the fact that the solar industry is relatively young, we don't have twenty, twenty-five years of data to look at that, you know, what happened in the industry. But from a practical standpoint, we do know what's happened at some other solar farms in Virginia, which is one of the things that we looked at closely, lesson to learn, basically. I don't want to make the same mistakes that other counties made with their solar facilities. You know, you just don't want to do that. And going back to your original question, from what I've seen and from what I've known from similar types of construction, if done correctly, it should not have a negative impact on the environment. But it has to be done correctly like anything else.
So none of the adjacent landowners expressed opposition?
They expressed concern. As far as opposition goes, the, I don't...
But no one spoke out or wrote against the project?
No, they wrote, they're concerned about the project. Again, that's why I'm kind of hedging a little bit, because actually, I was surprised, nobody came out and said, "Don't build it." It was all concerns about how it could impact.
But you said we're going to get that information on the twenty-eighth.
Yes, there, there's some very well thought out, justified concerns with building the solar farm. And we have letters from one adjacent property, and I've talked to, I've had many conversations with that landowner and others concerned about issues with wildlife, issues with runoff, issues with affecting the drainage patterns. And all of that, I wanted to make sure that y'all have in your possession on the twenty-eighth, on your packet. But yeah, there was definitely four, and I'm doing off memory, Mr. Earhart. At the public hearing, I had four speakers, if I remember correctly, that were concerned about building the solar farm. And primarily, it was natural resources sort of concerns. And then on the non-written part, I've talked to several of the residents at Monqueon Farms. Because the way that is set up, they have a view shed issue, that they don't like the fatten up. They don't, okay, I can get back to that. There's at least two residents who do not want the solar farm built. Because they've got really nice houses, built a nice deck, and they're looking down the view. And they're afraid that their view is going to go from the streams and the woods to seeing the solar panels. And that's going to be their view in winter time especially, through that. And those are concerns that we're still in the process of looking at, with candidates, with questions at this point.
Just wanted to, is the company coming back to give us a presentation here like they gave to the planning commission?
My plan is to do exactly what they...
Definitely explain a lot to them, too, if they weren't, I was going to say some stuff, but they're coming back.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, I think the best thing to do is, what my proposal is going to be, have them do exactly what we did at the planning commission, where they come, they give their entire presentation, and that will give y'all a good chance. And that presentation, all the information is in this handout that y'all have here, this Invengey book. And of course, I'm going to give y'all plenty of free time to have that. But yes, I'm going to do the same thing, have them come in, do their presentation, and then they'll be available to answer any questions, and I'll be able to answer any questions that y'all might have at that time. And what I would like is have the public hearing, after they finish their presentation, have the public hearing so you can hear the residents. Because each resident that has spoke at the planning commission meeting, I've talked to personally, and because, encourage them to come speak before y'all do, to express their concerns, because I think that's important and necessary for the process.
I'd, I'd like to, and I was, I was kind of reading through, so, written comments especially, but, you know, a summary also of, of the commentary that we've been receiving in the, in the packet when we get it.
That is my plan, is to get you the written and to give you a summary of the, there's been a lot, you know, a phone rings a lot. And I've, I've kept track of the, the concerns that have come in, and I'll plan to share that with the Board.
The decommissioning on that side of it, the, the study that was, that was done, how did we, now, I see that they've got, you know, their estimated costs for decommissioning, and then I'm assuming they're netting out that salvage value. What are we planning to hold them to on a bond, I would hope?
They're not netting out the salvage value. Mr. Berry, who's with Invengey, oh, yeah. He, our first meeting ever, that got killed. And Mr. Berry actually shared with the Board my personal opinion of netting out why it's in there. The ordinance, the code says, they have to give us an estimate that includes salvage value. I do not think it is in the county's best interest to reduce the bond amount by the salvage value, and there is nothing that allows them to do that. So the bond that we will get for decommissioning will be the total gross salvage cost estimate, plus twenty-five percent for project management. Because if the county has to take over the decommissioning and cash in that bond, we have to have enough money to manage it.
Sure, have you done any, just even cursory work to verify that this seems right, the number that they've given us?
I, I have done my due diligence, but limited, because again, for the conditional use permit, it's not a factor. They can't, you know, that's whether they can put the facility there, not, not whether they can build it. When we get to the point that we, that they're going to build, and they get a construction permit, then we have to work out the bond, and then I will be checking their numbers against comparable solar farms that I know of, and checking with people, and then to verify that bond amount is enough to cover it, plus twenty-five percent.
Sure.
But I'm very concerned.
We've, we've walked down the path of insufficient surety in, in, in my turn on the Board, so I, I don't want to start now with the first, the big opportunity to get one right that, that I've had, that we do.
And these funds are completely fall protected, and they're generally some way that like, what we were dealing with now?
No, I think that would be, A, because they only protected ones that were done in a certain window prior anyways.
And I've said the state, I mean, because like Mr. Muscowski pointed out, we've run into a whole lot of surety issues. And to be honest, I'm dealing with the Hollyfield right now. I, you know, just made it very clear to the operator from the word jump, that we were going to get a full bond, and it's going to be secured, and it's not going to... And this bond, unlike some of the others, we're going to review it every five years, it's a requirement in the law. So every five years, they've got to revise their numbers. So we get another chance to look at it. So say things get more expensive, whatever, then we can go in and work that bond. So it's not going to be a matter of, you know, twenty-five, thirty years from now, turning around going, "Okay, we're going to cash in your bonds, you walk away." It's something that the county and the operator are going to be actively engaged in. Just want to make sure we have the money. Again, on this bond, just to go back to some of the concerns, if that developer walks away, the way the surety and performance agreement is set up, if they stop our grading for two years, they walk away from the project, whatever it might happen to be, we can still cash that bond in. So even if they abandon the project, we would have the surety to decommission that facility. Because the wind could blow it a completely different way, can you imagine?
Yeah, so page ten says that project was approved by D Q and D H R in June two thousand nineteen. Field work will be taking place in the upcoming months. So we're now in the mid-October, I would have thought that...
They've done a lot of field work.
Is there any updates available for us in two weeks?
The field work has been done, most, all the field work has been done, the data reduction has not been done. The, as far as, I will look and see what I have. I'm really not going through their reports all that much until they get approval for the use. At which point, I'll jump into them really hard to make sure they meet everything. I do know we've got six archaeological sites that were identified. They're T and E, threatened endangered species, that looks clear. I have not followed up. I'll use the light to go back and check V R I's myself, because it's easy to do, I can do it online, just to make sure that, you know, it matches up. I'll do all that during the site plan review.
Do we have a maximum slope that this project can be constructed on?
No, that, that's going to be a function of what they can do. But when I look at the site plans, if they're only twenty-five percent slope, A, it won't work for them, and B, it won't work for me.
Well, it looks like that, you know, some of this area F and G, pretty steep, it looks like.
I brought that up to, to them.
Oh, but that's not going to be...
I'll explain what we found out. Of course, there's a 20-foot drop between the top and the bottom, I brought that up too. But the thing is, a lot of it's with R P A areas, and it drops off steeply in the edges of the construction area into these streams and swamps area of all the, around the sites. And the main, the main drops are at the edges, like they told us. So the main part, right, the main part of the site where they want it, because they're not going to spend a lot of money to prove grading either. I think you told us there might be a 15-foot thing that they might be grading, because it's pretty level in that area that they're showing where all the...
Is it within the Board's discretion to put in a condition that says you cannot construct on slopes exceeding fifteen percent, twenty percent, something like that?
Yeah, right now, we've got, we've got twelve conditions as we've added after the planning commission, or during the planning commission public hearing, we put in twelve conditions. As far as the steep slopes and the Board's discretion for putting those things in, there's nothing that prevents the Board from putting that condition in. If you would allow me to take a look and see if it's legitimate, as far as a practical standpoint. But it's up to the applicant, if he has a problem with that. To be honest with you, though, I can't imagine them building one, anything greater than twenty-five percent, because it does not work for the solar farm. And most of the steep slopes, as Mr. Greenwood's talking about, already in the resource protection area, they can't build in there anymore.
It, it looks like in that F and G, it's buttoned right down against that, and that, and...
You're right.
And so, I don't know, that's a concern immediate there.
Yeah, the F and G, that's the one right below Monqueon, if you look at where the thing is. And that's as part of the site I walked, because the slopes are, I was looking at the view sheds for residents, because, you know, I'm very concerned about view sheds, and residents are concerned about the views like anybody else would be. So, and looking at those slopes, I walked down to where I thought, and that's the 15-foot that Mr. Greenwood was talking about, the elevation difference. I walked those slopes too, and for the most part, they can't, the solar panels aren't going to work on a steep slope. Because it just doesn't work for them.
How do they maintain vegetation on these sites?
All the sites I'm familiar with, including the one we already have here in Hollyfield, it's a meadow grass mixture going through it. They do a decent show of how the grasses work. But, and the D Q as well, it's a standard... But, and the DQ as well, it's a standard meadow grass cut every couple, I think it's six lines.
So that's the vegetation. Can they actually get in and cut based on the density of the panels and stuff?
Yeah, it's kind of fun watching the guy duck down as zero turn lawnmower. The panels come up about six feet is at the top of the post, and they can't be any taller than 15 feet. That's their maximum height that we will allow them to do. And they actually cut around panels with zero turn lawnmower. It's difficult happens. Or they'll come in and bush hog and then just finish those off.
But not an excess amount of herbicide, which potentially are going to be running into the weapons of...
One of the concerns I have with, and I think he did address it, trying to prevent Johnson grass and some other invasive species. So for the first couple of years, as they're establishing the meadow grass basic thing, they will be using some herbicides on that for the invasive species if they're showing up. So we do have some of that, but this 90%, probably 85, 90% of this is in the bean field right now. It's in beans. So you take all the nutrients that they use in your normal farming activity. So as far as the herbicides and all that, first three years, you probably see some, but it's all going to have to be applied on the nutrient management plan or pesticide management plan anyway. So they should not have any runoff. So it's a trade-off between getting rid of the invasive species and, you know, potential misapplication of herbicide.
The leases that are included in here, as I'm flipping through this book, all three are three different terms. Is there a reason for that?
Yes, and I can explain it very well. It was, if energy did explain how they negotiate all the different things, because, you know, there's a gap. And so what happens? And it had to do with lease agreements and the proprietary stuff that, you know, they don't have to share with anybody as far as their contracts with landowners. That's a question that I think should be raised again, yeah, because I have to wonder how that plays into the decommissioning plan and how we should be handling again, and the like. Well, in the decommissioning plan, that, I actually explained in energy that I don't really care what their lease agreement says, because if you're not operating a portion of that facility, you have to decommission that portion of the facility for two years. So they would have to decommission. So if one lease ran up in 20 years, and the next one ran up in 30, and they said, hey, we're not going to be operating here, that has to be decommissioned.
So should the bond amount then be based on the decommissioning associated with the leasing agreement? I mean, because if you have $5 million and you don't know which portion is associated with this lease?
That doesn't matter to me at all. What it matters to me is...
You can't hold that in its entirety if you're only decommissioning a portion of it.
We do that on a routine basis with residential subdivisions. Once you finish a portion of it, you can ask for your bond to be reduced. In this case, on the decommissioning, if they decommission a portion of the plant, and they're going to give me a new estimate, because like I said, we renew this every five years anyway, they would give us a new estimate on what the decommission would cost for the balance of it, and they can reduce their bond by that amount. I'm not giving them any wiggle room. You know, because when you start timing to the lease agreement, then they start using all the language from the lease agreement to say why they don't have to close on that. In this case, we have a bond amount. If they decommission a portion of it, they can come to us and say we want to lower our bond amount by this amount, because we've already spent that, and it's only going to cost this much for the remainder.
The planning commission did make some stipulations since we heard the people that were kind of upset about the height and where the vegetation was going to grow. I said, it doesn't grow that fast, it'll be 15 feet at the maximum. But the plants are planted probably at only eight to begin with. We had a little stipulation in there, the planning commission requested that, ooh, sorry, it'd be a little deeper area, and they said they were going to, it was mostly a lot more than what the requirements ordinance requires anyway. And it's going to be, we put in there that we wanted more, and the simulation also states that it has to be taken care of. If it dies, if it, there were a lot of extra things we had to die. There were three or four dies, diseased, a couple extras. Anything that goes wrong with it, they have to replace it, keep it up to the standards the whole life of the project, so.
Yeah, they can't walk away, you know, just leaving all the vegetation dies, and then people can see these panels, but...
Do you think else, Jim? I'll take some more time to go through this, you know, already kind of dealing with some of this large. Again, salt is a hot topic everywhere right now. People are trying to get it right. We need to make sure we get it right before we're going to move forward with it. So, yeah, between now and the hearing, I'll be doing more.
Reduce the catalog? Okay, I want, and I know that's a thick document, but the last half of it is all assessments, trying to show property values and all the different comps for others throughout the country that they've done. And to be honest with you, I don't care. I don't look at that part. But again, it's all assessment stuff. So it's not as big as it looks, you know.
They give a two-sided permit, they save a lot of paper.
This is true. But you actually, in energy supplied me with these workloads, because I did not, to use the ink in the paper.
Oh, I know, I hope that was the case.
And it looks like to me, you don't get to sit down and sit down on ordinances provisions and having comprehensive land objectives get fun.
As y'all are well aware, we are in the midst of revising the subdivision ordinances and some of the zoning ordinances. We've had several work sessions with the planning commission. I submitted a draft to them for review a couple months ago. We are having a work session coming up where we're going to go through. We worked on some of the definitions. We are working on some of the more contentious things that we think are going to be of great interest to the community, specifically the minor subdivision ordinance, which we are recommending some changes to for minor subdivisions throughout the county. So over the next month or so, we will, we'll take the rough draft that they're reviewing now, and then I want to take that to the community. There will be time for public hearings and get feedback from the community on the direction that we're going with the ordinance. So, and it's really hard to separate the ordinances from the work for the comprehensive plan. So all of this is being kind of spearheaded, but the ordinances have to come first, and they'll segue right into the comprehensive plan. Then going to the comprehensive plan itself, many elements relating to the comprehensive plan are underway. And they are, we're working on the master utility plan for the county right now. As far as, as y'all heard the presentation earlier from the goal, we've got to look at that sort of infrastructure as well as our water needs, and all of that all ties into the comprehensive plan. And the ordinance is our tool for us to accomplish our goals. So, and what you can expect from the comprehensive plan is, one of the ordinances, we have some community meetings, and we get all that approved and everything set up for y'all's approval. We'll concentrate a lot of effort on getting the comprehensive plan completely updated. To that end, we will probably going to bring some outside help in to get the package right, do all the comprehensive plan stuff together. I think we're looking FY 2021. But that's when we plan to make the, that's actually towards the end of the whole comprehensive plan work, is when we bring a consultant and help make it right, make it good to the county. But in the meantime, we will be working on that diligently going forward. That's about where we are on that. So I'm hoping by the end of the year, we should have something in the ordinances to go to the public with, because this impacts every single citizen in the county.
Yes. I've talked with a few planning directors about animal keeping and kennels.
I was talking about that earlier.
Ordinance revision is a big, long, years-long process, obviously. But I've gotten nowhere, and I get a bunch of grief about it every time I encounter somebody who's got kennels. So we're working on that, right?
Funny story, and I'm full of funny stories. That part of the ordinances is under our property maintenance, and yes, I am working on that, but that is not part of the subdivision. And these zoning, you know, zoning subdivision ordinances. But we, as I'm going on the property maintenance and the dog kennels and yours, we are going to revise those, and then I'll be taking that to the planning commission to y'all for approval. One of the big issues, and I think you and I have discussed it, is the dog kennels and the fact that five-acre lots won't support a 200-foot property setback for the property line. And the other problem is, there's a lot of people in the county now that don't like to hear dogs barking. And so we have to address two of those issues, and I, you know, I'm looking to change the setback and require some screening and try to satisfy both groups. We accept the dogs from barking, and nobody's ever complained. But on a five-acre lot, you cannot have a dog. It just, there's not enough, or you need 200 feet from the nearest property line from that kennel. And, but it will be... Yes.
I really didn't.
And believe that's probably the number one call we didn't get. It's something to do with, and just for public information, a kennel isn't the structure that there, it might be a kennel, but our ordinance, a kennel is five animals, at which point, that's the kennel, and that's...
Will be house. Sure. Same kennel license to tape the front doors.
Yeah, because the kennel license is the number of animals, not the structure itself.
But regardless, on the five-acre lot, which is most of our residential, even around here, you can't, you can't make the war.
200 feet's a long way. And since all our requirement is you have to have 300-foot frontage, that means you've got 300-foot, your property line, even if you're dead in the center, it's only 150 feet from your edges. So, but yes, sir. Thank you.
Anything, gentlemen? I think whenever we posted it last time, do you have any questions? The resolution of the new packet to move skip hard C, show hard C forming from assistant to fire marshal?
We're not actually quoting on the resolutions, are we?
No, that's, that'll be under the...
My only comment is the same as what was in my review. Shouldn't fire marshal be capitalized throughout the resolution? Isn't that how, it's in the code of Virginia? So that was my only comment, because it's used interchangeably. Some places it's upper, some places it's lowercase.
Yes, it's a title, so it should be.
Yep.
Well, that, I know we can fix. I'll make it. Thank you, gentlemen.
Have a good one.
Gentlemen, there is nothing included in your packet on this item. I wanted to bring it to your attention. I met with John Edler about two, three weeks ago, and he informed me that they're putting in place for the celebration this summer. And so as they work out more details, I wanted y'all to have it on your horizon in thinking about maybe some way that the county would like to participate in helping with the celebration. I know they're going to be doing tour of homes and concerts and things like that. But as I get more details and definitive dates, then I'll bring that to you.
What is...
Just a thought, the gentleman that makes the, what's the name of the Christmas shop that God gives the Christmas?
TRC design.
Would it be possible to have some type of commemorative awarding?
That's a good idea.
That's right. Now, they'll give a copy of our historic, old house.
We have allocated the...
You're almost picking gate on that, Ben, don't you?
All right, the next item is FY 2019, food delivery reconciliation, and tax allowance. And we're after finding resources.
Including in your packet is the fiscal year 2019 school letting reconciliation data. There are no funds due to West Point. There are a couple things I did want to add to the board, though. The county administrator and I reviewed the reconciliation together, and we both feel that we cannot continue to let the school capture approximately $400,000 restricted funds each year. So the tax rate ratio needs to be more in line, shifting two to four cents to the county moving forward. This is something, in January, we are going to meet with the school and town board and discuss this further, and once we have further information from the official revenue and things like that, we can kind of crunch some numbers and then come to an agreement with that. Because it will affect the town schools. So we definitely don't want to just throw something at them when Jingle comes around. The other thing I wanted to make you aware of, you'll notice the $610,000 restricted funds amount from fiscal year 2019. I wanted to kind of let you know that what we anticipate using those funds for will assist the county in several different things, too. We're working on replacing our financial system. The school then will be able to use some of that money to assist in that, because they use the same financial system as we do. In addition, they could actually use some of those funds to assist with the, in support of that financial system. We have the need for repeaters in the school buildings, and we also are looking, as you heard earlier, the Motorola, where we will be needing to replace some of the radios and the buses. And we're looking at, I think we said, $5,000 possibly, or a radio on that. So those are some of the things we're thinking about that that money can actually be used for. That was it. Are there any questions?
Any response from the town?
I emailed, I think it was Thursday, and I have not heard anything. I have not heard anything from Dr. White.
Captain, I'm here.
I'm sure he's drafted these.
The... I'm trying to call, was there not available funds from the Hilton House project? Not any remaining funds from the Hilton House construction project? That wasn't used in chain order costs?
Well, sure, but now, this is, this is...
Right, but I'm telling you, we're still talking about repeater radios and things like that. Aren't those costs eligible under the...
That is possible. That is just something I did want to include, that, you know, those are some of the needs that they're going to have. But I'm pretty sure I had heard Dr. White say, if we have any big funds, then that might be something we could work towards using those funds from school.
What's the question?
It'll be a timing. It depends upon, you know, what they've expended of the bonds. If it's closed down on the line, then the theaters are needed to be purchased. And so.
Anything else? Oh, I'm sure we'll have those. I've got no doubt about that. But I've got to wrap my brain around what, I'll build a little spreadsheet, but. Thank you. Next item is G, roll forward your trust for FY 2019 expenditure funds to FY 20 operations of both the.
Gentlemen, of the FY 2019, we had, of course, funds that were unexpended, but the EDA and I have been talking about possibly rolling forward the balance that they did not expend, which was $23,770.58 for some opportunities for by grant incentives. The other request is to roll forward $6,700 that was unexpended in the legal counsel category. And I'm requesting that personally, just to be rolled into FY 20 to help offset some of the cost of our contract to St. Zederson. What I included with this was a memo that I created and have sent to the Economic Development Authority, providing some options for grant incentives. And this will be discussed at their October 9 meeting. They have not had an opportunity to review it. I attached this just as an FYI so that you would be aware of what they were looking at, what they may decide on October 9th, maybe differ, maybe tweaked, or reviving. But this meeting, I'm just letting you know that I would like to request to roll forward $23,000 for the EDA and $6,700 to the FY 20 legal counsel. I'll be presenting these both separately so that the org can elect to approve or deny each of their own error.
And what, what's then, what was, I, I, what was appropriated for the EDA for FY 20?
The savings for FY 2019, which was $30,000.
Okay. All right. Good afternoon. Let's hear it, gentlemen.
Mr. Hart.
Aye.
Mr. Muscalsi.
Aye.
Mr. Greenwood.
Aye.
Mr. Anderson.
Chairman Poppins.
Aye.